Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Almost five.
Oh, really? She's almost five.
Mommy, mommy, so that doesn't work either.
I don't know.
We're gonna start in about one minute. I was gonna say if everyone could take their seats for everybody's seat.
I was just saying.
Oh, I saw.
They're here.
Oh, I thought I saw Jeff. I didn't see Jen.
We showed up tonight and there's any money left. Did we get it?
No. Sorry, though.
Door price?
There you go.
All in. Pop rock? Pop rock? I was smiling on my shirt.
Oh, there's. Oh, they were all together. Hey.
Sorry.
Perfect time. No, perfect timing. Actually, we're gonna go ahead and pass the budget without you. No, I'm kidding. And we can't do that. I'm just kidding. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Malamwe.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Correo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're here. Everybody's here. We have a quorum. We're gonna start with the consent agenda, and there are two items, and they're both items to approve minutes. Again, that's all we do here, but we do have a correction, as I understand it, from the Clerk's office with the second item.
Yeah, and also if we could just say that there were no public comment cards as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there are. I skipped over public comment, not because I messed up, but that's right. But I did mess up and not overtly saying we have no public comment. And so.
Thank you, just for the record. Also, one of the things that was brought to my attention on item 4B, which is my minutes for January 21st, 2020 for the Cal. Councilmember Malamwe brought to my attention that I left a sentence off on something that he had discussed about streets. That appears on page three. He has one statement made and had asked that I add that back in, and so I will be amending the minutes. So if you could make a motion to approve them with the amendment discussed to add streets, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? What was the addition there? Was it les roues sont très glissantes?
No, no, no. It's simply that we discuss streets and that the city manager provided an update on how we're going to have a new process for deciding how streets would be fixed.
Great. Are you making a motion then to approve?
I am.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Excuse me. You can't second your own motion. This is Chicago.
Trying to see if you're paying attention.
Before we proceed, sorry.
Just a second. I just wanna announce we have a motion made by Councilmember Malamwe, second by Painter. Yes.
So this particular one we're looking at, are we looking at the January meeting right now or are we looking at the December or the previous meeting? So we actually have it on the consent agenda, so we could do both items together with November 18th being adopted or approved as presented and January 21st being amended per Councilmember Malamwe's suggestion. Okay, thank you. Just clarification. Thanks.
Okay. All right, if everyone will go ahead and vote. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce. Madam Clerk, we're gonna go ahead and move right along to our presentation discussion. First is on a presentation of the city's 2019 accomplishments as requested by the Administration Department, and we're gonna start with our city manager, Mr. Gleason, and then we have about 10 minutes and a 10-minute council discussion before we move on to the next item. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Do I have three minutes, Scott?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was a document that we created last year, same time, but it was 2018 year in review, and really this is just a quick walkthrough of some of the highlights for the year, the accomplishments for the city. And this is a document that will be on the main city website. The old one is tucked, I think, two or three clicks into it, but this is one that will be front and center for a certain amount of time that the community can take a look at some of the stuff that's occurred within the city. And I'm gonna walk through. I'm not gonna read everything word for word, but I'm gonna hit some highlights. And first part, you got a message from me. We'll skip through that one, but then when we talk about administration, a couple of these that I wanted just to highlight. They're all important and even more than what made the final copy in this document, but we'll hit some of these high points. A couple of things at the very beginning. Talk about initiated a nationwide recruitment effort resulting in the hire of Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus and Police Chief Dan Donath. It's hard to believe that Billy's been here a year, but this is something that occurred early in 2019, and then Chief Donath in August of last year. And I'll say this, we saved by doing this nationwide search ourselves through HR Director Nicole Albertson, through her team, we saved about $45,000 to $50,000 by doing this ourselves. And I would argue that, you know, we had large pools of applicants from across the nation, and we got the best candidates in my mind. Skipping down to completed the West Market Street mural project in partnership with the Illinois Art Station and the West Bloomington Revitalization Project. This is one that is a focus. It's a beautiful mural, and it's one that the elected officials make it very clear that public art is important in our community, and more to come on that topic in the very near future. Also, another highlight is we worked to implement changes to the sick leave buyback program to limit the city's cost exposure. This was a major focus of yours, and it's something that we've got accomplished, and we're seeing, you know, the sick leave buyback will end for all employees except for bargaining unit 1,000 that negotiations start any day now. Next in the document is just some pictures. Downtown busy events, got the police officers on top, and could have a lot of pictures throughout the year, but again, we're trying to keep this streamlined, convinced or condensed document. Economic development. Wow, we could talk a lot about economic development. One, we stood up a standalone department and just put that focus on economic development. And again, it was not to take away from the Economic Development Council, from the Chamber of Commerce, you know, from some of the other economic development efforts in the community. It was to complement and strengthen what the overall regional approach is, but also to strengthen as a standalone for our efforts on economic development. Westminster Village up there at the top left. You know, this is one that you really don't hear a lot about. That's a $62 million investment in our community, and it's quite a renovation and expansion project. Another one, and all of these are very important, but we got a $6 million Veterans Affairs Clinic on Hamilton Road. We saw Rob Dobbs Restaurant. We saw Ajo and Agave Parkview Inn rebuilt after their fire from a few years ago, and just a number of things. Nice, quick, easy read, but this is a good overview of some of the accomplishments this Page two is major renovations, a number of those in the community, and then what we anticipate in 2020. So hopefully, we'll be sitting here this time next year talking about the accomplishments in 2020, and that could be that line or many of those items and more in the right column. Go on to a different department. Economic Development in and near downtown, down at the bottom, and you can't really see it, at least on the screen, but it talks about participated in 56 events with an average attendance of 700 people during these signature events. So the downtown was hopping with different events, and in large part, you've got the DBA and you've got Melissa Hahnitz, the Economic Development Director, have really, you know, increased the kind of events that we have downtown, and more to come in 2020. So again, we're gonna be sitting here this time next year, and we're gonna talk about numbers that are gonna be what we're talking about today. Community development on the right-hand side. This is thanks to Jennifer Tony, Katie Simpson, but it's about the fifth bullet point down, received one of only six healthy housing initiative technical assistance grants in the nation from the National League of Cities. This is a big deal. This puts us on the radar with national organizations like the League of Cities, and it's one that they participated in the Cost Free Conference. That was a couple of months ago. I believe it was in North Carolina. Then down at the bottom right, just the facts. Over 7,500 construction permits, 2,255 building permits, and then that nice number at the very bottom, nearly $85 million in construction value for year 2019. Public Works, busy as always. One of the highlights that I wanna talk about there is completed the Water Infrastructure Master Plan, which creates a 20-year plan for capital improvements and smart water technologies. This is one that will be laid out in front of council in the next couple of months, but it's something that was completed last year. And then if you look at just the facts, 3,558,050, let's see, gallons of water pumped. And this is something that communities would die for, to have the kind of natural resource that we have in a water resource. It's huge for this community, and obviously, we serve the region in many capacities as well. No, I'm doing good, Scott. Looking at the time. On the public safety side, fire. Do I have Chief Moore? There he is. Responded to over 11,000 calls. This was over 700 more than the previous record, and I believe that was in 2016. Let's see, increase of almost 700 over the previous year and a record for the department. Also down at the bottom under fire, contracted with Site Med and now have completed the first annual wellness physicals on over 90% of the Bloomington firefighters. You know, this is something that the chief advanced. It was very important to him, near and dear to his heart, to conduct these types of physicals for the firefighters that serve our community. So it might not seem like a big deal in the scheme of things when we're looking at other accomplishments that we have, but it's stuff like this that's very important, trying to support the employees that are in that public safety world for us and just making sure that, you know, they've got a healthy life beyond the 25, 30 years that they give the city of Bloomington. Police right below that, continued to keep our streets safe. We had 349 DUI arrests, which is surpasses, this is where I come up with 2016, I apologize. This is a record that beats the 2016 record of 300. And then the bullet point below that, I think it was Assistant Chief Kenny Bays and Greg Scott that would have presented last year on the ILEAP accreditation, and this is one that verifies the police department has policies, procedures, and daily routines that are in full compliance with the professional standards of modern law enforcement. And this is no easy task, and it's not a one-and-done either. This is something that is ongoing, and to maintain that accreditation, it's something that the police department will constantly have to keep up on. Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts, you know, there are a number of things that go on in that department, but the one that I just thought was amazing was the completion of the Rolling Brook Park and Harmony Park Inclusive Playground Project and Expanded Pickleball Courts. This is one, when I drive by that park, it's still very well-attended. It was an awesome project, and I think there's more to come. The Library. This is one where I'm gonna jump down to the increased vocabulary, improved focus, and inspired more active imaginations by encouraging reading during the annual summer reading program. Nearly 3,500 children, nearly 600 teens, and nearly 600 adults completed the program. There's a lot can be said about the library, and Jeanne is here, but I'm gonna recognize her. She's impressive. She's innovative. This city has an excellent librarian in Jeanne Hamilton. And that's it, guys. It's, I'll open this thing up to you guys for 10 minutes worth of comment. Again, it was just a quick walkthrough. Really, I'm hoping everybody takes the time and do a deeper dive to the document that's in your hands or go to the main webpage where this has a link. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate that. Start with Councilmember Painter.
Well, thank you, because this is the most positive, action-packed year in review I have seen since I've been here. Thank you so much for all of your work and to everybody who's contributed to this. It's something to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Painter. Other comments, questions, suggestions? Councilmember Malamwe, second.
Yes, I have a strong suggestion. I'm kidding. I just wanted to say that it's very easy to lose track of our accomplishments because of the day-to-day. We're so busy. So I think this is a very nice document for all of us to reflect on, all the successes that we've had, particularly in the area of economic development, because I do know in the past, you know, there has been this underlying current that, you know, the city of Bloomington is not easy to do business with, and to me, that presents a different picture. It's very positive, and it shows that we're actually pretty flexible and easy to work with. So just wanna say thank you. And also on streets, I want to commend you on putting together BloomingtonStreets.com because that increases transparency, and it makes it very easy, very accessible for folks to see where their tax dollars are going. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin.
I would like to echo Johnny's comments about all the work that the staff does, because certainly we don't get out there and do it ourselves. And what I notice and I'm very happy about is that just about all of this economic activity is through the private sector, which reflects that we have a strong business community, and I wanna continue supporting that in every way we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Okay? Thank you, and again, thank you, Mr. Gleason. Thank you to all of our department heads and all of our staff that have helped make all of these things happen over the last year. And as all the women, Painter, said, this is probably the most action-packed year we've seen in a very, very long time, since probably either of us have been served as elected officials. Thank you again. And we move right along then to item 5B, Presentation of an Update on the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget as requested by the Finance Department. And again, just to clarify, we are in this budget process, and yet our fiscal year for the record, of course, is from May 1st to April 30th, so we try to get this passed in the first meeting of April, the final adoption, so that in case, for some reason, and that's only happened one year, since I've been mayor at least, we had to go to a second meeting in April, and that's where you start biting your fingernails, because it's getting a little, you know, the time is ticking. So this is an appropriate time for us to kinda get an overview and to have this information presented to the public. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott, go ahead and if you would, step up. But this is also another area that credit goes to the elected officials, and we can't talk enough about the FY21 budget, or any budget for that matter. And even though we do the Finance Director's Monthly Report, we've talked about the FY21 budget, and we'll be talking about it next week. We'll be talking about it on March 9th, but you really, when we're talking about being stewards of the taxpayer dollar, even if it's a quick run-through, you know, we can't talk about this budget enough, so definitely hear the desires of the elected officials, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott. Scott?
Yes, this is really just meant to be a preview for next week. Next week, we'll be going through some of the same exhibits, and we're gonna be going through the detail on the capital projects. And the change we're gonna do this year is, instead of me just bringing up the capital projects and just kind of reading them to you, we'll have the directors that are responsible for those projects come up here and give you a brief overview or background and answer any questions related to those. So a little deeper dive into, you know, where those public funds are being utilized. I think that's a big interest of the public, so we'll try to expand that. For tonight, gonna just, you know, run through the same slides about the totals for the citywide and the general fund budgets, some of the dollars we're using for cash for equipment. We'll do a year-over-year comparison on the major tax revenues and the general fund revenue expenditure exhibit. Those are the same exhibits that I go through every month, so as I've mentioned before, I'm trying to have some redundancy in some of the statements that we look at so that people become familiar with those and they're more educated, informed on the finances. You know, if I keep throwing more complicated statements up there, I think it's just gonna make it more complicated, so. But I am open for feedback on what's being presented. So having said that, the balance, or the budget's balance, I mean, the process, I've mentioned this before, Finance does the revenue forecast. We take in the trends for the current year. We look at the IML forecast that they provide. We can use a little gut instinct, you know, and then try to dial it back and not be too excited about things are going, what's going on. The departments basically supply all the expenditure requests. HR does all the payroll. We consolidate all that information in the system. You know, it's 4,000 lines of accounts, 4,000 accounts, and we start doing all the comparisons, year-to-year versus prior year actual, prior year budget, four-year average, you know, why did this number go up, down, et cetera, et cetera. And then we see what dollars are, this is really specific more to the general fund, what dollars are available for one-and-done projects, and then go into the second level of process, how do we determine which projects we're going to do? And so that's, you know, part of next week's presentation, what the projects are gonna be listed. But, you know, fortunately, this year, our revenues are keeping pace with expenditures, actually maybe outpacing them a little bit, so we've got a good economy going, good local economy going. Things are going really well for the city, so that has translated nicely into this year's So pretty flat year-over-year. So the citywide budget last year was 227 million. We're at 230 right now. So just a slight increase, 1.2%. I've indicated in other presentations that our capital projects, when we went from 19 to 20, we saw a significant increase in the citywide budget. A lot of that was related to motor fuel tax and water and sewer projects. A lot of those projects are getting rolled to 21, so you can see our capital projects just a .9 million dollar increase, 2.2%. A lot of those projects got rolled. So that is one of the reasons that our citywide budget has maintained about the same level as the prior year, and then, of course, with expenditure and revenue increases. General Fund, last year, we were right around 109 million, 110 this year, so just some general increases. You'll see in a moment that our major tax revenues, we've increased those by one and a half percent, so that revenue increase has kept pace with our expenditures. General Fund balance, jumping down, this is really kind of like what we're expecting to come in at, for the 20 fiscal year end, because when we go into 21, we're not really showing any contribution to fund balance. We're utilizing the extra funds for projects and for the next line. The cash for equipment, this is the strategic goal that we've set of weaning ourselves off, maybe I shouldn't use that term anymore, but weaning ourselves off the capital lease for equipment purchases, so starting to pay cash for our equipment. Last year, we did a little over half million. This year, we're attempting to do 650,000, so trending further along and paying cash for our equipment, making that a current-year discussion instead of the capital lease kinda has a lag to it, obviously, where we're doing debt service over five years for most products and 10 years on the larger ones like the fire trucks. So for tonight, we will go through a little detail on comparisons, but next week, we'll get into the citywide and, again, the projects, and then show some fund balance roll fours and that kind of thing. So major tax revenues, you're gonna see the same positive information here that I've been showing each month. So, you know, just highlight, I'm gonna just highlight some of the, I guess, not outliers as far as values go, but some of the different things that we were subjected to due to the state, some positive things. So the internet retail sales tax legislation that went into effect October 2018, I believe, in January 1st, 21, online retailers are gonna have to start collecting the local tax. So we've come up with an estimate. It was difficult, but we tried to use our local tax and the tax rate for use tax at the state level, the increase that we saw in the last year and a half, and then try to attribute that to the retail side, and what that might mean as far as home rule. So we've got a little bit of a bump going in home rule, and that's what this explanation here, because as this legislation goes into effect, the revenues that we receive from the state, they're gonna change categories. So the home rule, the local portion will come into the home rule, whereas before, all the retail, online retail internet sales tax has come in through the local use tax. And as you can see down here at the bottom, I'll just highlight, we've increased these major tax revenues by approximately $1.5 million. But next week, I'll go into a little bit more detail on that. So moving to the general fund, I split this into two separate slides, whereas during the monthly review, it's all on one slide, so we'll have revenues on one side, expenditures on another. Use of fund balance, I just wanted to highlight the $786,000 that shows for use of fund balance, that is completely for the restricted pension reserve. So this year for '20, we've projected using about $300,000, and the rest of the million was related to the BCPA Creativity Center use of fund balance, also restricted. So the BCPA portion went down, the pension portion went up, but we still had a net decrease in use of fund balance. Major tax revenues, just went through that exhibit, so that's driving that increase. I wanted to highlight this because this is an accounting, not issue, but an accounting change that's really affecting our budget in a year-over-year. For the BCPA, we had basically advertising donations. People promote the BCPA, and our auditors used to make us book that as if it was actual dollars received, but then we'd have an expense down in the advertising, so it was really a net wash, and it just kinda grossed up both sides of our statements. So we've removed that. It's no longer required, but that's really what's driving that big increase. It was really skewing the budgets year-over-year. But I wanted to highlight that because it's something we really thought we should do, but it's gonna surface in a comparison like this. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight tonight is the transfer in, transfers into the general fund, we, the general fund, I shouldn't say we, general fund supplies all the services to the enterprise fund. So general fund includes HR, legal, finance, administration. We also now, as part of Finance, have the billing department, utility billing, and the collections department. the collections department. So, those, those two departments that are part of Finance, pretty much 100% dedicated to the enterprise funds. The cashiers do do some parking collections, so there's a little bit that's not allocated. But otherwise, we charge, we, being the general fund, the general fund charges the enterprise funds. That revenue into the general fund, general fund is reflected in transfers in. And I want to just highlight something because I've done a review, we've had this tremendous increase in credit card fees. We, we actually have one point, over $1 million per month paid for utility tax bills in the form of credit cards. So, our credit card fees are going up significantly. I'm not advancing any ask here, I'm just letting you know this is one of the reasons that our transfers in have gone up. And that category, the credit card payments, has gone from $800,000 up to 1.2 million in like two years. So, we've had a significant increase in that. So, it's just some of the things that drives our budget that we really, at the city, we don't have any control over. You know, so if businesses start paying their, their water bills with their, with their credit card account, you know, we're getting our revenues quicker, it's more efficient, but we're going to see that as far as expenses go to. So, just wanted to highlight a little bit behind the scenes and sometimes factors that drive things and, you know, we just have no control of those. Expenditures. Salaries, so 1% increase, I put a note in here, net of the vacancy offset, I've described the vacancy offset before, the increase was about a little over 2%. So, you know, cost of living, that's, that's really what's baked into that line item. The benefits, the significant increase there was related to I M F rate. So, and then the contractuals, we had a significant decrease in contractuals related to the legal department reorganization. So, what we were paying to sorling came out of the contractuals line, went to salaries. So, that was the majority of the contractuals decrease. Total capital improvements, this is just by fund. I'm repeating myself, but next week, we're going to go, we're going to have the exhibits showing line-by-line what these projects are and be open for questions and comments at that time. So, $41 million, you can see the split. I put a, a note in the capital improvement, that's the general fund-related capital improvements, the 3.7 million. There's a million dollars in that that's for the zoo, and it's really grant donation-related. So, unless a grant comes in, that won't be spent. So, I just wanted to highlight that in this exhibit. So, the remaining schedule. We have, obviously, the presentation, or the proposed presentation next week, it'll be very similar as to this slides, but with additional citywide, the projects, fund balances. The details should be online, so that, you know, the two books, the 650-plus pages, combined pages, should be online before that presentation, before Monday. The books will be available before the public hearing. We're trying to work that out with the printer right now. So, the budget, budget public hearing is March 9th and the final adoption on April 13th. So, you know, I, a lot of work goes into the budget, a lot of all hands on deck, you know, as far as the department heads, directors, the finance staff, the council. So, I just wanted to kind of make a comment that, from my perspective, I appreciate everyone's input, always open to hearing suggestions on additional pieces of information that might make the budget more understandable to the public. I mean, a $230 million budget and all the moving parts between the departments, the things I, I try to comment on about the relationship between the general fund and enterprise funds and how things are charged, those are some complex interactions that, that affect our budget. And trying to put that into a meaningful context, I could, any input that you would provide, I'd be open to hearing that. Any questions?
Just here, just to clarify then, so, so one of our, I mean, we've, this has been an ongoing process, the budget process, you know, and at any given point, you're preparing one year, beginning to pass another year, implementing the previous year, so you're kind of juggling several different budget cycles. But in order for us to make this clearer to the public so that they can understand and maybe have more of a sense of ownership and empowerment, one of the things, even though we're toward the end of this particular cycle, we do have about a month there where we can, especially as elected officials, you know, are in having meetings with our constituents, either in wards or citywide, begin to try to educate people on what this is. And also, if there are significant gaps, perhaps it may or may not be possible for us to get it this year, but for people to say, hey, you know, I think we'd like to have X, Y, and Z for next year. So, that, what I see here is, in other words, about a month gap before we finally adopt it, even if we don't make, we're not likely to make major changes in the budget. But for us to have a kind of a, a public education set of sessions, a public education interval at times, so that people understand more about what's going on. Again, I wish there were more than a couple of our constituents through this evening, but obviously, this is, this is all we can do, you know. But I want to thank you. Councilmember Black and then Matthew.
Thank you. And thank you, Scott and Tim and staff. So, I guess from, are you looking for reaction on the process? Are you looking for comments about the budget? What is, what's staff looking for this evening from us?
I'll take whatever you guys want to provide, but this in a, in more detail is going to be presented to council next week. We just didn't want to miss an opportunity just to talk about the budget. So, if you want to hold comments for next week, that's fine. If you want to share comments now, that's fine, up to you.
Great. Thank you. And so, you know, as I'm sitting here watching this, this, I'm starting to think this is the seventh budget that I've worked on. And this feels the most calm of the budget processes that we've done, which is nice. We've certainly had some ones that have been more rocky and some that have been all over the map. And I think that the, the public likes us to be consistent and thoughtful in our process. And so, I think we've done that here. Part of how I view the city budget is that it's kind of the embodiment of the policies and philosophies that the council has. And, you know, when we start talking about where we spend money and how we spend money, the budget really encapsulates that in a numerical fashion. So, as I start thinking about kind of things I like to see in the coming year with our budget, just a couple of thoughts, and maybe this will be captured through this process or as we start to build out future budgets. I sent Jay Tetslaffe, sorry, pushing the spot, Jay, an email a couple of months ago that, that he answered. I asked, I was curious, how many trees in City of Bloomington plants on a yearly basis? And that number ranges between 400 and 500, but has gone higher for various reasons. And so, when we start thinking about a budget, I'd like to see us increase the money that we have allocated for tree planting. And people are like, well, what's he yipping about tree planting for? Because that's a really good way to offset our carbon footprint. It improves the quality of our neighborhood. And time and time again, I hear stories about people who have lost a tree in the parkway for various reasons and want to see it replaced. And I think that's a worthy use of our taxpayer dollars to help improve Bloomington. So, I don't know how we capture that in this process, and maybe we'll take those conversations offline, but that's a, that's a specific one that I would look at. Of course, I'll make my pitch for O'Neill Pool on a capital improvement project. I think that, you've all heard me say it, but I'll say it again. But, you know, in conjunction with that, of course, the library and the Eastside Fire Station, also priorities. I think we'll see those kind of get flushed out here. But I really just appreciate, you know, the line of sight between where we are today and the, the end of the budget cycle and when we vote on it. One final thought, we've talked a lot about it in the past, and it may not be appropriate at this point in time, but we've talked about our bond rating and ways that would potentially improve our bond rating. Now, I'm not sold that I want to do that, but I don't know enough to make an informed opinion, so I'd be interested in being educated on that. Personally, I believe that our reserve should be as, right where the line needs to be, as close as possible, and we spend that extra revenue on, on capital improvement projects or things that our residents need. But that, again, that's a philosophical policy choice that the majority of the council has to agree to. And we've, we've talked about it in the past, kind of at a high level, but I think this might be the time for us to really dig in and understand what should our reserve level be that will improve our bond rating? Is that even something that we should desire to do, especially in the context of the interest rates that we currently have? So, thank you for all the work that we've done, and I look forward to continuing this process.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Matthew and then Craybill.
Thank you, Tim, Scott. I'm sorry, was there something said about a pool? Are we talking about pools? Is that new? No. No, so, Scott, thank you for a couple of segues to, to two points I wanted to bring up that, one thing you said was that this is reflective of our policy decisions. And we're seeing that play out right now, right? Of course, we plant more trees equals more time spent raking leaves and cleaning up leaves in the sidewalk as a small scale of those. But I'm okay, I'm okay with trees, the same as you are. And Scott, I appreciate that you called out credit card fees because this is a constant hassle for me and my personal life as well. And, you know, one of the things I just wanted to mention, though, is, is one side of this is that we have credit card fees that have gone up because we're allowing automated payments and convenience payments for our, our residents as well. The other side of that is, I think we approved a contract for like 1.8 million dollars just for printing and mailing water bills. So, there is a, there is a give and a take with those credit card fees as well. I think the next step that we're going to need to do there is push for more people, I think a lot of people are still getting paper bills and paying with credit cards. So, we're actually taking the expense on both sides there. And we need to see if we can come up with a way to get more people to do the electronic credit card, or electronic water bills. I get an email from the city every month that says, your water bill is due, click here to look at it. And two clicks and I can see my entire water usage for the last four years for my house, which has caused me to call the plumber a couple of times. So, I think that that's the next step there to offset those credit card fees, is how do we push more people towards the electronic bills, as it were, there? And the second thought goes to another Scott, point that Scott made, so thank you, Scott, again, which is the reserve balance fund. And I'm wondering if we could take more money, you know, one way that you can improve your credit rating is by having a bigger savings account. The other way you can do is by paying down more obligations. And I was just thinking, I would like to see us put more money towards getting off of the leases, equipment leases faster. So, if that's, if we had a million and a half dollars from the 2020 budget that's going to roll over, could we dump another big chunk of that into getting rid of those hardware and equipment leases that we're under? Because if I remember right, I think we're paying like 280,000 dollars a year in interest on those lease payments right there. The sooner we can get out from under those, the, then that is another expense that just goes away, right? And so, if, if we're talking about a credit rating agency, hopefully, they would look at constant things that we are doing to pay down debt as well as having a reserve fund in place. Just a couple of thoughts from me based on some conversations today. And both of those were policy decisions that I had pushed for hard, so definitely support what we're doing there and just looking to what's the next step past those. So, thank you very much for what you've done so far, appreciate that.
Thanks. Councilmember Craybill and then Carillo.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll say thanks as well, Scott. Appreciate you working with us and making this as understandable as possible for us and the public, but it doesn't always get through to me, so it's a little dense. So, I'm going to ask some dumb questions, and I'm not afraid to do that, so. One thing, I guess, is I know that we're talking about possibly increasing funding for connect transit. At this point, has that factored into the budget or is that something we're looking at for the following year's budget? Is that just up in the air?
Yeah, I have not been involved in those, those significant increases this year. I think we have 1.26 million, which included a 5% of their, the capital side, so a $30,000 increase over the prior year.
And then, this is a really basic question. So, we have the taxes of estimated of 94 million, right, for 2021, major revenues.
Major, okay.
Right. And then we've got the next page of revenues of 110, right? And we have a, a citywide budget of 230 million. What's the difference?
What's the difference between the major tax, so like, so?
That's a question.
Okay, yeah, sure. No, it's okay. All questions are good questions. So, the material from the revenue side, the water, the water fees, the sewer fees, the stormwater fees, the solid waste fees, those are not considered major tax revenues.
Okay.
So, those.
That gets you to the 230.
Pardon me?
That gets you to the 230?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Excellent, okay. Income tax revenue, right? Is that something that's solely collected by the state and then sent to us?
Yes. It's allocated based on a population formula.
Gotcha. So, would that be impacted, so I guess if, if, okay, that's, that's sales tax, but let's say that there's changes in the income tax structure for the state, that can impact what we receive, correct?
Yes, could. And the economy can change that, obviously, as well, too.
For fines and forfeitures, where, where do we get most of that money from? What kind of fines and forfeiture? I think it's like 700,000?
Yeah, that's, I know that's a significant dollar amount. I'm going to reference my list, so I don't. So, ordinance violations, court fines, parking, and towing. So, that's, that's the major categories there.
Or any one that's higher than the, I mean, that kind of is the big one?
I can't, I'm not, I can't answer that at this point.
Okay.
I can get you that, though.
And for our reserve funding that we have invested, what do we have it invested in? Is it more of just kind of conservative?
It has to be, yeah. So, everything's pretty much in short-term instruments.
Right.
You know, that are restricted by state statute.
Okay.
So, we are doing, I am doing a review this year, right now, a treasury review.
Right.
To see if we can, you know, eke out any more return on, on those balances.
And, I mean, if I could ask this, is most of that invested locally in banks and meaning?
Yes, I'd say most of it.
And with regard to our reserve, right?
Well, let me back up. So, like, so, I mean, it's, it's a little complicated, like, we have a significant, like, 26 million dollars through Morton Bank, but there's, it's a program where it, it basically puts it in CDs in banks across the country because of the FDIC insurance limitations.
Right.
So, it's, it's through a local bank, but the eventual dollars, so I just want to be on the record, you know.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
On, on the reserves, we've talked, Scott and Jamie have talked about it, and one of the things that I think we need to mention is, we haven't always had that in our history, right?
Right.
And so, you know, if we do have another downturn, we need to have that ready, available for that purpose as well, not just for bond ratings and that, and that type of thing. Do we have like a, like a worst-case scenario planning, like if, if the economy tanks, that we, we're able to kind of weather that storm?
Well, I don't know if we have an official, like, because you'd say, have to say, if it tanks so much, I mean, the GFOA standard, you know, is the 15%, the two months, but, you know, right now, we're, we're more like 20, 20-some percent. So, we're better than standard, and the standards are developed on, a lot of research into that, that kind of question.
Okay.
It's a difficult one to kind of pin down to a specific answer, I guess.
And then I, then just another, I guess, similar question on the, the tax revenues that, that, you know, you estimate for 2021, those are pretty conservative, right?
Yeah, we, we try to be conservative. So, you know, we're, we're looking at a trend and then we'll dial that down, yeah, because nothing worse than overestimating on revenues.
Okay.
Thanks. But on the flip side, we've been very conservative in the past, too. And so, that's, you know, finding that happy medium, that's, that's.
On, on this point here, we are way over budgeted in our time. Can I have a motion to extend this? And I have several people.
I motion.
Okay.
What? I second.
Whoa, 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 we're, by, let's, we, another 10 minutes, okay? Are we okay?
Yay.
Okay. Move by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Carillo. If everyone will go ahead and just vote. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce. I'm a clerk, we're starting the clock over at 10 minutes. And let's see, I had Councilmember Carillo, Bray, Councilmember Craybill and Bray, okay.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you so much for all the work that has gone into this. So a couple of things in different buckets. One, I think I would also be very interested in knowing about how the forfeiture revenues break down.
Sure.
The other thing is, I think what would be helpful with this for a lot of folks who I know have been trying to keep up with this process, but are like, you know, "I didn't do that good in math. I understand." But to have something that's like a graphic representation of how the budget breaks down, I think would help a lot of folks wrap their minds around it better. And then, yeah, I want to ditto some of the things that Scott mentioned for the next budget process, like O'Neill Pool and the library, and also downtown and Connect Transit. But then a couple of other things that have surfaced from some of these conversations that I have been having with constituents, that I kind of want to just like put out there and socialize and start to get us thinking about, is I've been doing a lot of research about public participation in cities that have found a way to cover childcare expenses for people during city council meetings. That's something that feels like it would be a very modest expense, but one that could certainly help us, help this room not look like this. And have people participating and feeling engaged and empowered, particularly as we're deciding what we do with our money. The other thing is, like, want to remind us the important conversation that was had here a couple of months ago around weather mitigation. I have been thinking back to that day as it gets colder and colder, and so I think that's something we also have to have on our radar. I understand, like, some of it is a matter of, like, the resources are there, and they may not be the best coordinated, organized, publicized, but I just don't really think that we get around there being more people in need, weather getting more extreme, and then us not having to spend any more money on it. And then the last thing, because I've been dealing with this a lot in my ward, is around the rental inspection process. I think that there's been a number of significant articles over the past couple of years about affordable housing, and, you know, that's a big deal, but I think the most immediate need that I hear from people is like folks that are dealing with some wards. And, you know, having talked to the folks who are responsible for overseeing that, you know, the staff is pretty limited, and it feels like, you know, is that something we value? Like, you know, personally, I feel really strongly about not seeing people, especially really vulnerable populations, exploited because they don't feel like they have recourse. And so I think that that's a place that we could use some strengthening. But yeah, thank you so much for all this work. This is awesome.
Councilmember Bray and then Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Scott, and thank you, City Manager Gleason, for shepherding this through. Getting in the weeds here a minute in regards to the credit card fees, can you talk to us a little bit about that in regards to what are the usual practices in other municipalities? Because that caught my attention because those numbers are getting large, these fees that we're paying. And I know as I do transactions online frequently, I carry that fee rather than leaving it with the vendor, or... So I wonder what municipalities do with those fees typically?
Most municipalities that I've reached out to are still bearing that fee. They might, like, as far as their local tax, they might split it up and put the burden on businesses, but they want to also put into place the option, so if someone wants to pay online, they have the credit card option, or they have an e-Check option, you know, things where they're not going to be paying that convenience fee. So, you know, one of the things we're looking at, we're, and I'll be talking to you probably here within the next month or so, we have a large utility billing conversion, system conversion, that we're, it's a year-long process. It's currently scheduled to go live the end of May, and expanding our online payment options, or not just online payment options. So initially, we'll just be replicating what we do now, but, you know, the intent is eventually people can pay by text and all these different things. And then maybe looking at addressing this cost if it comes up at that time, you know, for an opportunity there as part of like, first, what are our businesses?
Thank you for that. I'm interested in having some more conversation about that because I think that aligns more with a modern method of interacting, giving people choices. But then if I choose to pay with a credit card bill and potentially get points, or I get money back and like, you know, I would be willing to bear the fee of that transaction that may be worthwhile to me, versus if I have a choice then to do the direct payments, I guess debit card-type payments, right, or EFT-type payments that wouldn't have charges. So I am interested in further conversation on that, because those numbers are going up, and we need to take a look at it and be intentional. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you. I always appreciate all the work you do on this. I'm not going to get into detail questions. I'll ask you that on your own time.
Okay.
In my own time. But for the benefit of the wider community, I would like you to kind of explain how we can, the city calls this a balanced budget when there's still a lot of debt out there. And I guess this kind of stems from the state, you know, there's debt responsibilities with pension and all that other kind of stuff. So, the general public kind of doesn't understand how you can have a balanced budget in a municipal budget, which is different than, let's say, a home budget. Is that too complicated?
No, it's not too complicated. But I'm not sure, like, that distinction. I would almost associate them, because you make decisions to benefit your house or your municipality to borrow, to address something you need now, knowing that you need to have the resources to be able to support that in the future, but you need to spread it out, you know, a major capital improvement or something like that. The pension debt is a different issue, but our other borrowings, when you're, you know, when you're talking about significant capital improvements and spreading, plus it adds a useful life over time, too, so you're paying for it over time. So part of that budgeting, that balancing process, when you're talking about debt, is really acknowledging that you acquire something, you receive the cost, but a benefit, and you're spreading that cost out over the benefit, the period, the useful life of the asset. So it's a decision that's made. The pension benefit, or the pension debt, now, we pay actuaries a lot of money to tell us that, you know, we've got this, Jamie brings this up a lot, you know, we've got this schedule of debt that's coming. We've got this large current debt. How do you meet that obligation over time? How do you balance your budget, your current budget, based on what they're telling you the need is going to be? So with that 2040 deadline, you know, with the pension budgets, that's where you were seeing that big, you know, it was going to get extreme. I think that's one of the reasons, you know, the state decided to address it. But you're balancing your budget with the current year's required expense. So, part of it is, like, if you have to make your mortgage payment this year, do you have the funds to make it? You don't want to extend yourself further so that you can't make your debt payments, so that eventually, you know, those will roll off, and you can expand further, or you can put that money in the savings. So, I'm not sure if that answered the question for you.
It does, but what I'm hearing then is that it's, the budget is balanced as long as your projected revenue equals what you've decided to spend.
Yes.
Okay. And then the pension debt is a separate animal?
Right, but we have actuaries tell us what we have to put in for this year to meet that long-term obligation, so that's part of our balancing of the budget.
And where does that come from? General fund, or?
Yes.
Okay.
The general fund.
And we do have some earmark taxes for that.
Pardon me?
We also have some earmark taxes for that.
Right, but so...
Yeah, property and utility.
True. So the property tax levy and the utility tax increase, and then plus this year, we're using part of the reserve. So, $8.2 million in property tax levy, $2.3 million is available from utility tax, and then we're adding $800,000 from the reserve to meet our pension liability of 11, I can't do the math real quick, but it's 11-plus million.
Thank you, because people out in the city don't quite understand, and I appreciate you explaining.
A lot of moving parts.
Thank you very much. We've got a couple people, including a couple of council members who've spoken already, but I need at this point another motion to extend our comment here for another 10 minutes.
So moved to extend for 10 more minutes.
Okay. Move by Matthew, second by Crable. If everyone will go ahead and vote. Oh, there's, motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce. Before I come to start with the Councilmember Emick, who's yet to speak on this.
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick. So, I agree that in my ward, I agree with Alderwoman Carrillo, that a lot of folks have expressed concern about rental inspections, and just in terms of how we might consider budget. And that leads me to the second comment, which is that when I attended the IML, we went to a budget session, and we're told it's, a budget isn't a plan, it's a set of values. And so that's why this conversation is so important. So I thank you for participating in it and giving us the information that we need. And please be looking for an FAQ from me, a frequently asked questions, including the one that Alderwoman Bowlin posed, because I think that will help the public give us input on what they value, and therefore what we should do with our expenses. So, thank you.
Councilmember Matthew and then Black.
More of a statement, just to something Jen, you said, about the cold weather plan, that I agree with you, that we need to have the conversation. Just for everybody's knowledge, the McLean County Emergency Management Agency put out a list last week of all of the shelters that they're aware of that exist right now. Again, there's coordination things that had to happen, but they did put out a list on Facebook and on their website last week. So anybody who's looking for it, they put out a good list, and then the police department shared it, which is where I caught glance at it the first time.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Black.
Thank you. And this has actually been a really productive conversation, so we've not done it this way before, and I really like it, because I'm starting to hear some good spitballing ideas from us and some coalescing around some ideas. Couple of things I wanted to highlight and go back to was the credit card fees. We've tried to have this conversation before, and I've heard, maybe this is a separate policy discussion we can have later, that we can't legally charge for the convenience fee, but I, like Kim, I've also been charged online to use my credit card, so I don't know why we wouldn't be able to do that. And at a quick glance, you know, I think it would cost me about 20 bucks a year to use my credit card, and I think that would, I think that's a reasonable price to pay for that convenience. So I would be really curious to know how other municipalities either get around that or incorporate that in some other fee.
I'll do a survey.
Yeah. Survey, there you go. Cool. Because that's a good policy choice, and it may not fix this budget, but for future ones, because this problem isn't going to go away. I think eventually, we're going to have to come up with some means for dealing with this more on the long term. Number two is the rental inspection program. We've talked in the past about allocating more funding towards having an inspector. I know that it's something that I've mentioned before, Karen mentioned it before. It's, I know it's challenging to find staff for that, but that would be an increase in staff that I've always been very supportive of, to make sure that we have the resources to conduct the inspections as appropriate and actually fulfill our obligation. I know that when we passed the rental inspection program, it was a hot topic. I don't know if it still is, and maybe we need to revisit that. But again, from a budgeting standpoint, that is probably the only staff member that I would be advocating strongly for seeing, and an additional FTE. And then as for some of the other things that we were talking about, you know, Connect Transit and such, I think that's going to be coming through at different points in time. But I know the community has a lot of focus on that piece, so if it could be maybe in a future presentation, you know, how we've allocated it. You mentioned the 30K. I've heard that before, just contextually, but what was, was that for like a station stop, or what was that 30K for?
It's just, it's just their annual...
Ask.
Their annual ask, okay. It's a five, so their funding is split into the capital and operating categories. It's just something that was established when we did the sales tax increase back in '16. So originally, I think it was like 600 and 600, 600,000, 600,000. And so every year, one of the 600,000s, like, I'm not remembering which one it is now, goes up by 5%.
Gotcha.
So that's roughly 30 grand.
Okay.
Maybe up to 600 now. But that's where the $30,000 increase, and it's just every year, they ask for that, and that's what we've been presenting as part of the budget.
And I think I've seen, I don't know if it, this year, but last year, we did a budget in brief, that, you know, like, two, three-page packet that kind of broke down with some of the graphs, and that's always helpful, too, especially that one with the dollar sign, or the dollar bill that breaks on the, yeah, that's the one. Yeah, there's the infamous dollar graphic.
We'll be issuing that again, so.
So, cool. Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilmember Matthew.
One more thing. I didn't want to turn it into a debate, but while I have been charged occasionally for using credit card online, I just want to bring that we outsource the water bill, the way they're handled and reconciled right now. And the worst to me, worse to me than the losing the money for credit card fees was to continue to pay the bills for outsourcing for the people that are, because some people, $20, they will just say, "I'll send a check." And then we have to pay somebody to open the check, deposit the checks, and all the process that goes along with the checks. And the first bill, the second bill, I forgot to send a check, the third bill, we got an email the other day about how many man-hours go into turning off water and turning it back on again over and over, those processes. So I just want to make sure that it's a bigger conversation than just the credit card processing fees, because there's all kinds of other stuff that go into it, so. Just wanted to throw that out there, too.
I think you got lots of nods and agrees on that. That's very good. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Thanks. We very much appreciate all your help and work, and we look forward to hearing an even deeper dive next week by the department heads into the capital projects.
Thank you, Scott.
And, yeah, thank you. Council, excuse me, City Manager Gleason, you have a final report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Welcome to the city. We have seven new employees this past month. Steve is with Public Works, Leanne is with Fire, Jordan, Public Works, Steve Law is with Public Works, Catherine is support staff at PD, Mary Taylor's Community Development, and Jung Young is Parks, Rec, and Cultural Arts. Next item that I had was, we have Public Works employee Earl Boytnott. He has a benefit down at the Public Works Garage this Friday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, terminal cancer. He's in hospice. The staff wanted to do one more benefit for him, and that's going to be this Friday morning. Since his 2020, we're going to have a presentation from the regional person on February 24th, so it's going to be the regional representative from the federal government's going to come in and make that presentation. And then also, Connect Transit, this was another item to comment to. On March 23rd, we're going to have Isaac and Judy Buchanan come and talk about the chaos force recommendations, so we'll talk to them then. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. At this point, we don't have an executive session, is that correct? And so just to state that for the record, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Wow, okay. Moved by Councilmember Carrillo? Is there a second?
Second.
Several seconds. Councilmember Bowlin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.